The meeting of the Kuleo O'Kulani Aki Neighborhood Board will now come to order.
Again, the meeting of the Kuleo O'Kulani Aki Neighborhood Board will now come to order. Aloha mai kako. Welcome and thank you for joining us. May I have the report from Honolulu Fire Department?
Now, does that sound better? Oh, okay. So I believe at the last Neighborhood Board meeting, there was a question regarding stream maintenance. Per the Department of Facility Maintenance, stream maintenance was last completed between February 16th, 2023, and April 14th, 2023. You can visit www.honolulu.gov/dfm for more information, or you can reach out to the Division of Road Maintenance Administration Office, 808-768-3600. With regards to incident statistics, the monthly incident statistics presented are specific to the Neighborhood Board boundaries, and therefore, multiple fire stations may overlap that Neighborhood Board boundary. Speaking of statistics, I have some for you folks. For May 2024, we had one structure fire, we had six activated fire alarms, 31 medical incidents, and four motor vehicle crashes. And now for the fire safety tip, this is a long one, so buckle up. Hazardous weather conditions, especially during hurricane season, will increase the risk of power outage. HFD encourages everyone to be proactive in protecting yourself, your family, and your property with advanced planning and preparation. In the event of a power outage, remember these safety tips. Everyone should build a 14-day disaster supply kit that takes into account your electricity and medical needs. Resources are available at honolulu.gov/dm. Using appliances during a power outage, so you want to avoid carbon monoxide poisoning, so things like generators and camp stoves and charcoal grills should always be used outdoors and at least 20 feet away from your windows. Turn off and disconnect appliances that may be damaged during possible momentary power surges. For more tips and detailed information, visit ready.gov/power-outages. Starting July 1st, Hiko Hawaiian Electric will commence their Public Safety Power Shut-Off, PSPS, program to reduce the risk of wildfires. As one component of their three-phase wildfire safety strategy, Hiko may preemptively shut off power in identified high-risk areas during periods of high winds and dry conditions. The program is being utilized as their last line of defense to keep communities safe, but may result in extended power outages. A PSPS could last several hours or up to several days. The HF and Hiko will continue to work with Board of Water and other city-state and federal agencies to lessen the impacts from these PSPS. Visit hawaiinelectric.com for more information. That's all I got. Are there any questions for me?
Yes, go ahead, Tim.
Well, I appreciate you letting us know, and we'll be diligent in our daily inspections and whatnot. I would also suggest reaching out to Hawaiian Electric Company, but thank you for bringing that up.
Second question from Janine Johnson. Can you hear me? I'm having trouble with my headphones. Were the medical emergencies, those include ambulances from Wailepe?
I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
So you said there were 31 medical emergencies that you responded to. Does that mean that it includes the ambulances?
A medical emergency would include an ambulance, yes.
Okay, just would like to thank you again. My Ohana needed an ambulance this past month, and it's always nice to know that you're there, ready to help people in the community, and I'm so grateful. Thank you.
Thank you for saying that, and I'll pass along your thanks to the ambulance crew as well. Thank you.
My question may be a mere image of Janine Johnson's, but when my mom got a little older, passed 100, she got visits from both the ambulance and the fire department, and you appeared almost instantly when there were calls. Do you keep a record of your response time or average response time to the 911 calls that you receive?
Yes, sir, we do. We do write down our response times for every call. We keep a logbook of our time of receiving the call and our time of responding and our time at scene, so yes. There is no, the range is dependent upon time of day, traffic, and location, so it really varies. I mean, across the street from the station with, on a Saturday is, it's going to be a lot faster than on the top of Waileiki on a Monday morning, so unfortunately. Again, I don't have a specific, but I would say it takes us approximately one minute from the time of receiving the call to get out of the station, and from there, anywhere from 1 to 7 minutes to get to most residences. Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
What is, I'm sorry. What, here, let me say that one more time. What is the chances of a fire disaster this summer? Yeah, because it's summer, you know, in this area. I mean, I'm always, on my mind, it's the high now, right? So what is our chances? I mean, how, how in danger or like, so what is the conditions that is necessary for a fire disaster? Do we have those conditions here on this side of the island if summer ends up being really hot?
You mean between Kalani and Kuleo O?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, that's a great question. I'm sure that's on a lot of people's minds these days, but I think it would be irresponsible of me to try to speculate on chances on things. I mean, that's not what, that's not what we do. We don't, we don't deal in terms of make-believe or guess games. So for us, we're just going to train as hard as we can, and we're going to respond as fast as we can, but I certainly wouldn't want to throw out predictions or guesses on any kind of dangerous situation, yeah? I know that's not an answer to your question, but don't want
Can you hear us? Janine?
Yeah.
Oh, good. Okay, we're back online. Lieutenant Thompson?
Hi, good evening. I'm Lieutenant Mike Thompson from District 7 on the Day Watch Lieutenant. I'll start with the stats for the month of May. There were four motor vehicle thefts, two burglaries, two thefts, and 11 car break-ins. Total calls for service for that month is 6,450 calls. Crime prevention tip for the month, we're going to focus on auto thefts. And some of the do's, turn off and lock your vehicle even when you park in your driveway for a few minutes. It only takes a few seconds for a car to be stolen. Carry your car, car key in a waterproof pouch or pocket when at the beach. It's easier to replace a lost key than a stolen vehicle, and that's important because a lot of auto thefts now that occur around the lookouts and beach accesses, people lock their keys in a lockbox or they hide it in the car, and the thieves watch them hide the key. And when you're down the beach, you could be gone for an hour, two or three, and have well enough time to grab the key, and when the key, it's the easiest way to steal the car. So keep the key with you if at all possible. Park in busy, well-lit areas whenever possible and keep valuables out of sight during the busy shopping season. Put them in the trunk or hide them elsewhere. Ask for identification and meet in public places when you're selling your vehicle. Be cautious when accepting a personal check from a stranger. If your car has been stolen, call, report to 911 immediately. And I left a brochure if you guys want to look at it. There's some don'ts on the other side. If there's any questions, I'll take the questions now.
Are there any questions for Lieutenant Thompson? I don't see any. Thank you so much for being here and for you and your fellow officers for taking care of our district.
Thank you very much.
Next, may I have the report for the Board of Water Supply?
I'm here, Chair.
Hi, Christopher.
Hi, everyone.
Speak loud.
Okay, can you guys hear me? Is it okay? Okay, perfect. Hello, everyone. My name is Chris Sugi-Moto from the Board of Water Supply. Before I give this month's general water announcements, I would like to go over a question that was asked at last month's board meeting. So it was pertaining to drought condition projections for this summer and how bad it would be if there will be a diarney for conservation. So the National Weather Service forecasts below normal precipitation through at least June 2024 and possibly as late as October 2024. The BWS has already wrapped up its conservation messaging, which will continue through the summer months. We encourage all water users to visit our website at www.bordofwatersupply.com/conservation to find easy tips on how to save water and information on how to qualify for rebates on water-efficient appliances. And some more information, so while our island is not currently in a drought state, the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, NOAA, provided a brief summary of what they expect for this summer. So for agriculture and water supply, mostly word areas appear to have started their dry season early due to a higher-than-normal trade-wind frequency and the below-normal rainfall forecasts. For the higher-than-expected wet season, rainfall prevented an extension of the wildfire season. So the downside is that wildfire fields have recovered, early start to the leeward wildland fire season due to recent dryness coupled with below-normal rainfall forecasts. This is subject to changing weather conditions, and we recommend visiting this website at www.drought.gov/states/hawaii for more information. Okay, so tonight's general water announcements, the main break reports, there were four main breaks to report. The first one was on May 20th. It was an eight-inch main, and the address was 9.2 Waileiki Street. And then the last three were all on the same street. It occurred on May 22nd and then May 23rd. They were all 12-inch mains, and the addresses were 2186 Holakau Street, 2180 Holakau Street, and 2174 Holakau Street. So tonight's general water announcements, its topic is annual water quality reports. So the Board of Water Supply works hard to ensure that the water served to our customers is safe to drink. Each year, the BWS conducts thousands of tests on the water sources and distribution system to ensure that municipal water meets or exceeds all federal and state safe drinking water standards. The results of those tests are shared with customers in our annual water quality report. This report will be mailed to all customers by July 1st. Digital copies and additional water quality information is available at our website at www.bordofwatersupply.com. You may also call this number 808-748-5041 for more information. Yeah, send up my report. Does anyone have any questions or comments for BWS?
Yes, I recognize Callie Lucas. Hello, there we go. Hi, Christopher, thank you so much. I want to just bring to BWS attention the BWS roadway at the end of Onalani Street. There is a new sinkhole has appeared over the last week or so, and it'd be really great if BWS could come have a look at that.
Yeah, definitely. I'll bring that back to our communications department, and they'll notify our field guys to go send some guys out to investigate and fix the problem.
Yes, we have a question from Kevin Malkern. Go ahead, Kevin.
I received a little information in the mail that the Holava Zero Escape Garden is back open to the public, and you're having a plant sale with zero escape plants. Are you going to mention that?
Yeah, I actually wasn't aware of that. I believe it's going to be, I think they're going to make us talk about it at next month's board meeting. But as of right now, they didn't notify any of the Neighborhood Board members about it. But that's good information to know. I definitely would like to attend the plant sale. It's a very beneficial thing to the community. But I'll bring that back to communications and see if we can start mentioning it at the Neighborhood Board meetings for this month.
Christopher, we have a question from Ulupali.
I have a question about, the earlier, the earlier I ask this, the better I feel about like this climate crisis. Just, do you guys like take data on the ocean, like the global warming, water rising and stuff?
We don't take the data ourselves, but the UH, U-Hero, they deal with all like the data gathering, and then we work closely with them. So they share the data with us, so we have the access to the data. But us personally, no, we don't go out and gather the data ourselves.
Yeah, okay. And just, do you like have access to it? Sorry, just a question.
Yeah, it's, I believe the public has access to it. It's not just, it's available to everyone. You can just go on the U-Hero website, and then under like the whole, the sea level rise and climate change, and then they have all these cool tools you can play around with to see the different scenarios, like with the 3.2 feet sea level rise, and so there's a bunch of information on their website.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
We have a question from Tim Stanton.
Thank you. Eighty percent of the water in Papua New Guinea is catchment from the roof. So people here are amazed when people brush their teeth. It's a very simple thing, but if you switch the faucet off and then do your teeth, and then switch the faucet off to rinse it, you save so many gallons a day if you rinse, if you brush your teeth twice a day. And as I say, having lived in New Guinea and seeing that, I think is a sort of military aspect that they conduct. But I don't know if that's a tip that you might like to pass on.
I believe that's one of the conservation tips that we pass on, but I can bring that back to our I can bring that back to our water conservation department to. Remind them to like reiterate that too, because that's also, I agree with you one hundred percent. That's a very useful tip and it's very easy to do and you save. A lot of water and. But yeah, I'll pass it on and then we can kind of start reminding the public about that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christopher. We can't, we're having a buggy Webex today and I can't tell if anyone who's online has another question for you. Can you just stay put and I'm going to try to go on to board business? Janine, can you hear, can you hear me? Can anyone who's online hear us, hear me speak right now?
Testing one two, one two. One two.
Okay, good, we're back. Did anyone else have a question for Christopher Sugimoto? Christopher, thank you for always updating us and participating in our meetings. We really appreciate it. Thank you tonight for being patient with us. I'm gonna go ahead to board business. First approval of the regular meeting minutes from May first. I don't have form. Okay, pass on that. Announcements, do we have a representative of Hawaii bicycling league to talk to us about the Honolulu Century Bike Ride? Anyone from the Hawaii bicycling league? Okay. Looking at the time, I am going to, with your approval. Skip ahead to public input for items not on the agenda so that we can, we give our. Our officials and presenters a chance enough time since we've been. We've been stuck offline with our Webex problems. We're still having problems. Janine, can you hear me?
Can you sign? Test, test, can you hear us?
Now.
We will now proceed with board business if everyone can hear Jane. Oh, sorry Janine. Okay, so onto board business approval of the May minutes with corrections. And I will just read the corrections there pertaining to the presentation. What? Oh, it's not Jermaine. We can't minutes. This is the, no, this will be an in very good informational meeting, but not very good for getting business done. Okay. So let us go to public input for items not on the agenda. Is there anyone from the public who is participating with us tonight who wants to bring up a concern? Or question? Okay, let us go to officials reports then. First Congressman Ed Case's representative Julia, Julia or Julie, are you there? Do we have a representative for Congressman Ed Case? Okay. Let us now go to John Noochi. John, are you there? Mayor Rick Blandiardi's representative. Okay. Let us, okay. Dave Day, the representative for Governor Josh Green said he wasn't going to be able to come. Do we have another representative for Governor Josh Green? No, well, this is going very quickly. Okay. Here, but our favorite representative for Chair, City Council Chair Tommy Waters is here. Adam Dew, the mic is yours.
Thank you Chair and members of the board. I'm Adam Dew from Chair Tommy Waters office. Do you have a few updates from you? I did get to speak to Member Stratton about the overhaul on Po'ola Street. We will submit that request to the mayor's office and hopefully be able to report back next month. At the mayor's town hall a couple of weeks ago. Pu'u Honua O Wailupe was brought up. I just wanted to let you know. That our office has reached out to our state counterparts to work with Shifty, see if we can get this progressing, you know, a little quicker. We did have our request for the complete streets. Presentation, so I believe Daniel Alexander from the city's complete streets is online. And they'll be giving a presentation later. If you have any questions or concerns that you had with it, please ask Daniel. But you can also share them with Chair Waters office. My contact email is on our newsletter. Also today, the city did pass, we had our full council meeting. The city did pass our FY twenty five budget. I'll give a more detailed. Update about it next month, which there was some talk about ambulances today. So it was a very tight budget this year. But Chair Waters and the other council members, they did find money for six new ambulances. They're quite expensive. They're about five hundred thousand dollars each. And then lastly, there was talk and concern about wildfires. Has this, excuse me, has this board been given a presentation or had a presentation by Firewise Hawaii? No? Okay, so if Chair, if that's something you and the board would be interested in, I can make that request. Great. With that, is there any questions that I can answer?
On Po'ola Street, we've lost several old age people and about twenty dogs. And there's bones up there. I'm joking, but the the grass is four foot high now. When I mentioned it in January or February, it was cut within a week. So really appreciate it. Thank you.
Does anyone have questions for Council Chair Tommy Waters or Adam, who is here with us? Adam, you guys are definitely going to get strawberries. You are so wonderful and we thank you for always coming to our meetings. Next, Senator Stanley Chang. I believe he has, do we have a representative Teresa?
Yes, hi.
Welcome back.
Thank you. It's been a while. Hi Chair, hi board. So for this month's updates, I dropped two links to the chat for anyone who wants to sign up for our housing newsletter or constituent newsletter. And if you're in person, you can feel free to give me an email and I'll sign you up manually onto our newsletters. Let me just put my email into the chat. Let me just put my email into the chat. And then also we wanted to give an update about some power outages that were happening in portions of East Honolulu. Hiko did helicopter inspections and revealed that the causes of the outages involved an overgrowth of albizia trees and it was along the base of the Ko'ala Mountains and grew it down. So Hiko's working on clearing that out. And then another reminder for everyone that in about a year or so, so May 7, 2025, all residents will need a real ID driver's license or real ID state identification card to board domestic flights or enter federal facilities. And that's a great time to switch over your ID to the real ID. And you can sign up to switch it over at alohaq dot org. So that's mainly our updates. And I don't know if Adam's still here, but we are working a lot with Adam to get a lot of like city requests and put it so thank you, Adam and City Council Chair Waters.
Thank you, Teresa. We have a question from Koi Lucas.
Hi Teresa, I, could you repeat what you said about the where the albizia are that affected the Hiko lines?
Yeah, so it was. It, the albizia trees encroach the transmission lines along the base of the Ko'ala Mountains.
On the windward side, on the Hawaii Kai side. I mean, by Hawaii Kai, that's who it, that's who I think suffered the power outage was Hawaii Kai.
I didn't know we had any albizias. Around here, so interesting, thank you.
Any other questions for Senator Chang? Teresa is is awaiting any additional questions. Okay, thank you very much, Teresa, for coming tonight.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay. We next is Representative Mark Casham. Is Representative Hashem online or does he have a representative to talk to us? No, okay. Casey Abbe from Department of Transportation.
Yeah, yes, sir, I'm here at your home. Can you see my screen?
Hi Casey. Go ahead.
Okay, yeah, good evening Chair Burket and members of the Kuleo Colony Neighborhood Board. Casey Abbe from the State DOT Highways Division. As mentioned in May, at May's meeting, a graffiti band is struck again right after we painted over the artwork in April, but fortunately, when I did my quick field investigation on Monday, June 3rd, our maintenance crew covered up the graffiti, so it looks good now. Pictures of other areas where our maintenance crew painted over the graffiti. The pothole mortars were trying to avoid in the right lane when traveling westbound as you pass West Halema Mau has been patched. At last month's meeting, if I heard correctly, there was a concern about a need of a street name sign for Bay Street. During my field investigation, there is a Bay Street name sign as you approach the intersection, but there is no advanced Bay Street name sign like the one for Kawahi Street. Realizing that Bay Street is located around a curve on the Makai side, mortars may not realize they need to be in the right lane to make the right turn into Bay Street. So I'm working with our traffic brands to see if we can install an advanced street name sign for Bay Street. I apologize, but I'm still working with our district office on scheduling the replacement of the missing overhead street name sign for Kuleo Road going westbound, but also noticed that there was no overhead street name sign going eastbound, so I work on installing one for mortars going eastbound. Also during my field investigation, I noticed there was no overhead street name sign for our any street. Going eastbound, there was no overhead street name sign for EK Place. Going westbound, the overhead street name sign for Po'i Kana Drive is missing. And going westbound, the red street name sign or East Halema Mau Street is missing, although they do have a overhead street name sign going eastbound. And finally, both the eastbound and westbound overhead street name signs for Hawaii Kai Drive is missing, so I work with the traffic brands and Oahu District Office on replacing the missing overhead street name signs and installing new ones and I'll report back at a future meeting. This concludes my report. Board members, elected officials can email me any concerns they have about state highways. If you can attach pictures or Google map of the location of your concerns, it will be greatly appreciated. I can take questions at this time.
Yes, Casey, we have a question from Sherri Spangler.
Yes.
No, okay, no.
Hello, oh.
Can you hear me now? Oh, yeah, okay. For the overhead sign for Eki Place, I don't know if you've noticed that's a. Those are substandard roads. There are no sidewalks, no county strips. It's, I think it might be Hawaiian homelands or some unincorporated parcel of land. It's not part of the Wailea Golf Course subdivision. So if you put an overhead sign directing people in there, you're going to have a lot of tourists who might come into our neighborhood to turn around or look for what they think is the coast road that does not exist. They'll turn into Eki Place and Eki Place is a very dangerous little, no place to turn around. Like I said, there's no sidewalks, no city and county strips, no area, it's very narrow, unimproved road. So I don't think that street should get an overhead sign.
Okay.
Directing people in there.
Sure, our local staff and not put us.
Give it a look see, you'll see what I'm talking about. It's, it's different. It's not the Wailea Golf Course subdivision. It's a specific little area that was not allowed to be developed. That like Kula, Kuleana lands, I'm not quite sure it's, you know, it's unusual. And their Paki parcels, I don't know.
Sure, okay, yeah, if the board doesn't want it, we won't put it on, install it.
I don't think they're going to want it and it's going to be cause dangerous situations because then people all have to come out and try and get back on the highway. And that's dangerous because there's no, there's no traffic light there. Any other questions for Casey Abbe, Hawaii Department of Transportation?
I have a question. Chair. I have a question.
Who's asking?
Chris Kramer.
Oh, Chris. Okay, CC.
Yes.
Okay, hi, Chris, go ahead.
Hi. Well, I, I didn't catch if Kia here. That right now it formally had this, the place name signed Kia here, which is an ancient place name. It's on the, as you're going, it's going, it's near the water supply pump station. And then that was taken down and now it says private road, but. So. I mean, if it would be nice to have the traditional place name reflected somewhere. Maybe it's not on the. Road, but it could be moved somewhere, but it it should be. At that location somewhere.
That's, that's on eastbound, okay.
Yes, eastbound. It formerly was up there and then it was removed like within the last year or two.
Okay. I will go investigate and get back to you folks at next month's meeting.
Thank you, Chris, for bringing that up. Shelley Ham has a question for you.
I really just wanted to make a comment and I appreciate all input on the board, but I want to make it clear that Ms. Spangler isn't necessarily representing the entire board with her comment. It might be better to ask the residents of the neighborhood if they want a sign or not because the comment was made, if the board doesn't want it, we won't do it. But it wasn't necessarily the opinion of the entire board.
Yeah, I guess when I do my investigation for Bay Street, I look at the rest of the area to try to make it consistent. And I know if some of the street name signs were missing, that's why I just brought it up to the board.
Casey, thank you for making our streets safer and for for checking out what's missing. We appreciate your updates and and elevating our concerns, you know, to the Department of Transportation. We appreciate all the work you do for the community.
You're welcome.
Okay, I am pleased now to. Give our enters a chance to to share their expertise about about their their subjects. Actually, the first presentation is an SMA major, the Crane Residence, and really appreciate you being here. I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name. Steven, thank you very much for coming to speak with us and letting us know about this upcoming project. Go ahead.
So I'm logged in on the meeting on WebEx. I'm going to share my presentation, but I noticed that. Okay, that's fine. I'll go, I'll go ahead and share it. It just won't be reflected up here though, if that's okay. Okay.
Don't look very.
I mean.
Oh, great. Down the road.
What's this? Oh, okay. Perfect. I can do this. Awesome. Okay. All right, thank you, Board, for allowing me to present tonight. So I'm, my name is Steven Do, I'm with Koi Design and I'm going to be presenting about the Crane Residence, so it's a SMA major use permit. So the project is situated at 4929 Kalaniano Ole Highway. Here, I'll do this for you guys. See you guys see. On the- On the-
Patience to do. That's a- That took a lot of work and the modeling is just amazing.
So, are we online?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, while we are online again, can we please hear, learn about the Coconut Rhinoceros beetle?
I'm just gonna share my screen. Hi everyone, my name is Sana and I'm the Outreach Associate for the Coconut Rhinoceros Beetle Response. All right, so today I'm just gonna give a quick overview of the Coconut Rhinoceros beetle and its impact and some identification and also some recommendation and best management practices. So the Coconut Rhinoceros beetle is native to Southeast Asia and it has invaded a lot of other Pacific islands before it ended up on Oahu in 2013. And then it was contained to Oahu for almost ten years before it was first found on New Zealand last year. So Kauai was first in May of 2023 and then Maui and Hawaii Island in October and November. So the Coconut Rhinoceros beetle, they feed on mostly palms. So their favorite food or their primary food sources, their favorites are gonna be coconut, royal, date and fan palms. And then, but if those food sources are not available, they can feed on other sources. So other palms as well as banana, sugarcane and hala are some we've seen and confirmed here in, on Oahu. But then they can also for, on other places, we heard they go for things like kalo, sago palms, pineapples and even some tree ferns. So this is the damage we started to see on Oahu. So when they feed, they will leave these V cuts. This is the same tree less than a year apart, where you just start to see kind of defoliation and ultimately can lead to palm death. So this is an park in West Locks. We start to see more and more of this damage. Thankfully, not in this part of the island, but if you're driving central Oahu, west side and even north shore, starting to see more and more of this with standing dead trees. And yeah, just very sad things to see. So I'm gonna pass around some actual specimen here. The, so the adult would be a two-inch all-black beetle with a horn. And then the larva can get up to, it's gonna be a white larva and it can get up to four inches. So the adults are the ones that are feeding on the palm trees and then the larvae you're gonna find in any decaying plant matter. So that's things like mulch, compost, rotting logs. I'm gonna go a little bit more into detail what that can be in a little bit. So as I mentioned, adults feed on the trees, but they later eat that decaying plant matter. And that's where they're gonna live from egg, larvae and pupa. And as you can see on this cycle, the time from egg, larvae and pupa are about five months. And then they live, which is longer than how, what they live, the time they spend as adults. So they actually spend more time in that breeding material than in actual, as they are as adults and feeding on palms. There are some look-alikes out there. We have this on our website. The Oriental Flower Beetle, especially the larvae, is one that is getting very commonly confused. So, but they're both, both invasive, they're both pests, but Oriental Flower Beetle feed more on ripe fruit and flower nectar, not damaging the tree. But if you have any questions of what kind of larvae you find, you can always take pictures and send it to us. Our information will be at the end of this presentation. So this is a map of trap finds on Oahu. So you might be familiar with our black, they're called panel traps. So they're just a detection and monitoring tool. It's not a control method, but they show us the relative populations on the island and then detecting beetles on other islands. So on Oahu, most areas have some sort of population of idols. Most traps catch some population of beetles. Central, as I mentioned earlier, central Oahu, west side and north shore are gonna have the heaviest population and see the most damage. But we start to see more and more finds on the windward side. And then this area, we had a few finds, but not, nothing, nothing major. Not a lot of beetles in this area. So what they do is that when the adults feed on the palm trees, they are gonna bore into the crown area. And they're gonna leave these two-inch big bore holes because they're boring into the inner juices and the sap of the palm. And then when the palm fronds grow out, they're gonna have these V-shaped cuts. And this is what the damage you see on coconut. It can look a little different on fan palm, other palms, but they will always have those two-inch bore holes. And then, yeah, so they breed in decaying plant materials. So that is things like mulch or chip green waste, even whole green waste if it's actively decaying. And then logs and even dead standing trees or tree stumps, compost. Then something that we see more and more are potting mix and potted plants. So one common misconception is because it's found in mainland soil, that it was shipped here, or shipped here from the mainland. But these potting mixes get invested on Oahu when it's stored outside overnight. It's really easy for the beetles to just bore into that bag and lay their eggs in the bag. So that's an easy way to accidentally bring it home to your backyard. Here's just some more potential breeding material. So there's a stump there as well as a living tree usually don't have larvae in it. But if there's a lot of debris in it, it's a potential breeding material. And then you just can see in the middle the tiny little egg. So the egg will be about half the size of a grain of rice, so super tiny and hard to find. So easy to accidentally transport if you transport any of that material that I was mentioning earlier. So our recommendations is do not transport CRB material. So as I mentioned, it's, they're really hard to find. So especially if you're buying garden soil and you live in this area, purchase as close as possible. We say purchase it locally, but when we say locally, we really mean as close to your house as possible. Because if you're buying this kind of material in like an infested area, like central Oahu, at a garden store there and then bring it home here, you can accidentally transport it to here. And then manage your green waste. So if you have any of that breeding material, it's, just keep an eye out. It will take about four months for the egg to turn into those really big larvae that you were seeing. So if you check your compost pile every four months, that is a good practice because those big larvae is a lot easier to find than the tiny little egg. And then just try to not stockpile any of that material. Just buy as much or as you can use within a few weeks or just can use directly. And then treating infestation, so I'm gonna go a little bit more into that. So this is just a big overview. This you can find on our website. But this is for breeding materials. So things that you can do is that kill CRB is heat. So hot composting or steaming, you can submerge it in water. And then yeah, chipping and fumigation are other things. But this is on our website. For palm treatment, there is a physical treatment. When you wrap a fishing net around the crown of the palm, so when the beetle is trying to bore in, they get stuck in the net. And this is the only treatment that is actually excluding the beetle from feeding off the tree. The chemical treatments or the pesticide treatments, there are things like injections and soil drenches. So those are, we call them systemic, which you're treating the tree and the whole, the whole- And the, the whole, the whole tree will have this chemical in it. The beetle is feeding off the tree, they will die. And the foliar application is using something, you can either, our program uses drones. But you can also have some sort of sprayer and get into the crown area. But again, it will kill the beetles that are in there and not so much, it's not really a repellent. So with this, the best practices is really managing green waste. And then when you're treating trees, you have to do it more on a community or neighborhood scale. So the beetles can fly. If you're doing everything you can, you're treating your palms and you don't have any green waste. But your neighbor or someone on your block has a big mulch pile that can actively just breed, breed, be active breeding material infested. Then the beetles can fly our trees and even if you're treating them, they're still gonna feed on them. So you're still gonna see damage. And that's why we are really promoting this community management, coming together with your neighbors to manage CRB. If it's with green waste management or broad scale treatment of trees. And we do have a, a community management guide on our website. But it's, you know, connecting with your neighbors and planning out different treatments and developing that plan. And CRB response, unfortunately, we can't help with the actual treatments, but we can definitely help with any guidance along the way. So again, what you can do, inspecting any host plants or any potential breeding material, again, every four months is a good rule of thumb. And not transporting and make sure that everything is clean when you're moving any risky material. And then managing your, managing green waste and then spread the word and engage the community. And that is all I have for my presentation and I can take any questions that you might have.
Go ahead, Tim Stanton.
Couple of questions. I'm assuming that the big gardening stores like Lowe's and Home Depot and City Mill, they're all on board and aware of this. Can these little things bore into a new plastic bag of compost?
Yes, yes, it's really easy for them to bore through the compost.
That's a real issue.
Yeah, so we're trying to, to do outreach and talk to the big box stores, but they're all, you know, corporate. And getting into the, getting in touch with the bosses on the mainland can be really tricky. And unfortunately, CRB response, we don't have any authority to stop anything like that. It will be, you know, Department of Agriculture who will be in charge of that and figure out something.
As a neighborhood board, is there anything we can do to support you by going to the press, Joe Moore? Mentioning this on a scale that encourages people to actively contact these stores or keep an eye out. Cause I was down there two weeks ago with a friend, cause I can't pick anything up. And I noticed a couple of bags, never even thought about it, you know, with a couple of little holes in it. But looking back now, you know, was anybody aware?
Yeah, so that would be a good thing that you can do is definitely spreading that awareness and trying to get in contact with stores or with anyone who has the authority to, yeah, do a little bit more than we can.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, Jolly.
Thank you for that information. I had two questions. One of them is, are there any sort of non-invasive plant species that repel the rhinoceros beetle? And then the other is with the chemical treatments, does it affect the fruit of the tree for edibility?
Yeah, so for repellent plants, there's none that we know of this far. As this becoming more and more widespread, a lot of farmers are doing more and they can sometimes share with us what they do that we haven't tested. But as of now, I haven't really heard of any plants being, you know, planted near the palms to repel it. Cause they're really going, what might work is because they're kind of going for the smell of the trees. If you have something really strong that might be able to repel it, but nothing that I know of so far. And then, yes, for the treatments, for the chemical treatments, especially the systemic, you'd have to trim both flowers and fruits for a year. Because it is a systemic, it can be harmful to pollinators. So that's definitely something you would have to do.
Do you know how it got here?
So we don't know exactly how it got here, but as I mentioned, a lot of Pacific Islands have been infested as well. So it's likely that it got here on a plane, hitchhiked on a plane. Cause the first find was right by the airport on military base, so.
Can you, like, has there been efforts where, that were successful in getting it out of communities?
Yes, yes, so definitely, actually where they were first finding that, in Mamala Bay, they did a very strict green waste management. So they weren't allowed to bring anything in. They were burning everything that they created on site and removed it. And that is where the first population was first found that actually have very little beetles today. And other places that were able to do that big landscape scale of treatments and with green waste removal, we see less catches. But unfortunately, there's nothing, there's not like a magical spray or anything. It's really green waste management combined with palm treatments that has the best effect.
I have a question, ma'am. For, for regular, for homeowners, not, not people who do landscaping or farming for a living. Would it be a good practice if you buy bags of soil from one of the large gardening facilities? If you put it in a, in impenetrable, you know, plastic garbage can or aluminum garbage can with a lid for four months? And then opened it and inspected it, that you would catch any, any larvae?
Yes, you can do that or even submerging it. I know that's kind of tricky, but if you're able to submerge it for 48 hours, that will kill all CRB that is in there too. And then, yeah, when you are storing it in your, at your home, yeah, store it in a hard plastic container. Cause it's a lot harder for them to bore through that container. They are really strong borer, so, but it's harder for them to bore through that. And also it will again, ask the smell a little bit as well, so.
Okay, just, can I just ask one more question? For the kalo, would they only bore into the dryland kalo? Would they avoid then the, the kalo that's grown in low E because it's, it's, you know, submerged?
So we haven't had any confirmed finds on kalo here in Hawaii. So I'm not too sure exactly what kalo on other places that they bore into, but I believe it's a dryland kalo.
Oh, okay, I was hoping, okay, go ahead, Kevin.
I don't know if anyone gets my emails that I send out to people, okay? And I realize I have a distorted perspective at times. I'm, to say the least, those that you know me, know me. I'm actually a little disappointed because it seemed when the rhinoceros beetles were first identified in Pearl Harbor, it would have been great if they could have been controlled at that time. I had heard stories that when the federal funds ran out, the state didn't step in and continue the program. But kind of let them spread. I, I agree that moving compost around in bags has a potential of moving the insects. But they've actually, they started in Pearl Harbor, they went out to Wineye, they, they flew to Mililani, they're now on the north shore. I have them at my nursery in Waianaealo. Wishful thinking if kind of sterilizing one bag of compost that you buy is gonna do anything. It's gonna be a major, major expense. Those of my colleagues that are treating the trees are charging $125 to inject each tree. If you have five or more, it's drops down to 100 or they'll drench the material. I didn't realize until I started, I guess, collecting canoe plants. I always thought that the tree of life was, were the trees in front of the library. They're called lignumbites, which is commonly referred to as tree of life. But the Hawaiians think of the coconuts as the tree of life. You have water, you have food, you have something to make the, the house with. It, it provides all kinds of things and it's, it's, the, the costs are gonna be enormous. And so I think the Department of Ag, quite frankly, has failed us by, by not identifying a threat based on what it done in other parts of the Pacific and addressed it kind of as a state project. Now, now it falls to each one of us. The, the lady that left who lives on the highway, I ran out and tried to grab her and said, hey, you've got, I think, I think she has about eight or nine coconut trees in her yard. She said she was getting ready to have them trimmed. She's gonna talk to the coconut people about it. I was suggesting she might start a preventive program now. But that means each time you trim your trees, which are, I know, 100 or 125 a piece, then you have to inject them, 100, $125 a piece. And if you don't, you have an $1,800 or $2,000 cost per tree to remove them. So, so it seemed like some things the state is a little better at handling, you know, when it's kind of involves all of us. But I guess it's now in our court. I am working with the people from the university. I had planted, I think about 100 coconut trees at my farm and probably about 30 banana trees. And Alberto Ricardi, excuse me, is spraying the trees with essential oils. I didn't quite, I was excited when I kind of said, sure, you can spray my trees for a test plot. I didn't realize that he needs to spray them every couple of weeks. So although, even, even though it seems like a nice organic way to approach them, it's not practical, you know? But it does seem to be controlling them as long as he sprays them. The, there's a drench that we're using, some kind of a micro, that soap is nano encapsulated soap. Thank you, the big colored words. But, but it's, it's, I guess it's a soap that you drench the tree with. But that has been used in other parts of the world and the fruit you can eat, you know? And that is just once a year. It seems at the moment to be working. And so I remain optimistic, but a little frustrated. And the other thing I shared with you in my little email was a little fire ants. And again, no different than the coconut rhinoceros beetles. They were identified in Hilo 25 years ago and now they're throughout the entire state. You know, as the rhinoceros beetle, I think, is being found on all islands. So I know we might start kind of looking at how the Department of Ag is operating and maybe there's a better way to do it. Anyway, thanks for letting me do that.
Yes. I'm Tim.
What about our state representatives? Can we give them a kick in the bum? Excuse my French. Are they on board to help us?
I'm not sure because again, when I mentioned, and again, I, with all my information, I encourage you to check and verify. Because I, I think the hearsay that I get is from reliable sources. But with our representatives, it seemed that they were not adequately informed when the federal funding dropped. Because it seemed like when we had federal funding, that they, they had enough money to, I guess, burn and contain it. But, but then when the feds stopped funding it, that our representatives, they weren't adequately informed by the Department of Ag that this is, this is gonna be a major disaster, it's a major expense. I have no idea what it's gonna do, the tourist industry coming, oh, look, the telephone poles, yes, yeah, and the white sand beaches. It's not gonna be good, yeah.
More, we, we will work on this more in the, in the next year.
I think it's really important.
Do we have a reservation on this?
No, but we will, I think we, we are gonna work on this.
Cause our area is free of it.
I know. Thank you so much, Sana.
It's not gonna go away.
I know.
Yeah, I just wanted to also mention that with the representatives, there were a few bills, not just coconut rhinoceros beetle, but with a lot of invasive species, there are a lot of bills this year in the legislature. I'm not exactly sure what they're all, I'm not really involved, but I know there was a lot of it in the legislature this year, more than ever. And then for our funding, our program is funded by USDA. And our funding allows us to do this, so go out, outreach all over the island. But for our field crew to do treatments, they can only do that at ports of exit to minimize the spread off of Oahu. As well as checking our traps that are all over the island. So just a little bit of background about our program.
What I was getting at was the political side of it. I don't think America is gonna stand still for us to have a hit on Maui. And ongoing situations like this, I mean, I just think it's not fair. And I think it needs to be pointed out at the highest level in Washington. Hey, guys, we need help.
Okay, well, this has definitely got us going and we are gonna be, we're not gonna just let it go. I wanna thank you very much for talking about a very important and, and, I don't know. Yeah, not only, it's something that gets us going. We do, do we have a question? Chris, okay, last question, Chris Kramer.
Okay, so, well, I just wanted to thank the presenter and this is a huge issue. We are new, we're literally named for the new and as well as Cleo, all the knee drums, you know, the sounds of the knee drum. So we have to do what we can. And from talks with other folks in the CRB program, what they mentioned was that UV light attracts these CRB beetles. And I think if the word, people need to know that when they're leaving these lights and shining them up into the crown, they're attracting them to their properties. So I know we have, you know, absentee owners or, you know, some, we have a lot of these kind of spotlights in our community where people are shining all the lights all night long and that's gonna lure them in, from what I've been told.
Yeah, so there's actually research that is going, is just finished a couple of months ago. So there are, it's about to be a published research, but they are attracted to light. So the research has been what kind of light or what wavelength of light, of light? So that is something that has, had been tested and the results are gonna be out pretty soon, I believe, so.
I'd like to volunteer on behalf of Carolyn and myself, cause we're educators. There's another way, I think, that we can approach this and that's through the schools. And if there's any way we can develop a program that's, that's indicative of the sciences that can be included in curriculum, count on us, please.
Yeah, so we have a few different, we call them educator kits that we can pass along that has a specimen as well as some already developed presentations. And then my team, my outreach team, we're always, always available to come out for presentations as well, so.
Thank you again. We have one more presentation tonight and Daniel Alexander, thank you so much for your patience, for hanging in there. Can you please tell us more about the Kilauea Avenue roadway improvement project?
Yeah, absolutely. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I have some slides if I could share them all. I'm trying to do so now.
Is he able to share your slides? Okay, go ahead.
Am I up?
Share screen. Ah, no, we don't see, see your computer.
Cause you are sharing. No, you're not. Try that again.
We're having WebEx problems again. We're having WebEx problems again. Oh, no, you're dipping out. Hold on, gotta reboot.
Yeah. I'm hearing you well at this point, though. So are you hearing me in the room? We still re-bidding. Sounds like the folks online are, are hearing me okay, but it's like maybe they're still working in the room. Those folks that are in person, please let me know if you're hearing me and I can get started. Oh, okay, I'm seeing the thumbs up. Okay, so you're hearing me, sorry. I didn't hear anything from your side. Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll get going further due. So yeah, thanks for your, your time tonight and happy to give you this update on the Killaway Avenue Complete Streets Project. So I have some slides to share, I'll try to move quickly. And here. So I'm sure a lot of you are familiar with this, but Honolulu has a complete streets law that was passed in 2012. And that basically said that we should be designing our streets for all users. I'm going to set out some specific objectives within that goal. Safety was at the core of it, context sensitive solutions, accessibility for all modes, efficiencies in the way everything's delivered and how the transportation system operates. And a number of other things, including trees and green aspects of the street. So we're always looking to do this. And one of the, you know, core reasons, you know, and safety is listed first in this complete streets ordinance. And as we've, you know, one of the stark statistics that we, we have realized over the last decade, we have experienced on average a fatality a week on Oahu. So, you know, over 500 fatalities over that, for that decade period. And we know from the data that there's a heavy disproportionate share of being born by people walking and older, older residents, those over 65 or 70. And, you know, at kind of a high level, how do we create safer streets for all roadway users? So these are kind of two core ideas. One is dedicated and protected spaces for non-vehicular modes, sidewalks, bikeways. And another one that is really impactful to all users is limiting the opportunities for speeding. And the figure there just shows the probability that pedestrian will die when hit by a vehicle at different speeds. And you can see that if they're hit by a 20, they have a really good chance, a nine out of 10 chance. And then you may get up to 50, and the inverse is they have, you know, less than, less than a one out of 10 chance of survival. And it's not exactly the same with motor vehicles, but there's a similar relationship with, you know, motor vehicles as well as higher speeds have a greater severity of injury. So I give you a sense of our complete streets program, a lot of it works through our rehabilitation of streets program or repaving projects. So when we have opportunities that come up, a street is going to be rehabilitated. We look at our existing planning documents, our pedestrian plan, our bike plan, our high injury known locations. And we see what we can do. And so all these green lines are, streets are included in this package of streets. And I'll just highlight, I'm going to talk about Killaway in detail. But a couple of them that are having pretty significant improvements as well that I'm not going to cover today. But Harding Avenue and Kamaki Avenue are both going to be getting new sidewalks on the section where they're missing. And that's a, you know, came out of our Oahu pedestrian plan. So delving into Killaway Avenue. Looks like you are sharing videos or animations. Do you want to include your computer audio while you're sharing? Oh, sorry, that's just, sorry, that's an automated AI message. Sorry. So on some of the, the facts about Killaway avenues, we did existing conditions. One, we do see a lot of speeding on there, so those are the max speeds we observed. There's a pretty wide range of vehicular traffic along it, I'll go into that in more detail. But it's in certain sections, less than 10,000, and as high as a little over 20,000. It's a corridor that's packed with students. This includes elementary, middle, community college. We unfortunately have seen one fatality in the last five years on this section, and it's a very wide street. It's 78 feet, that's curb to curb, so it's a very wide street. We did a big community meeting in September 2023 on this project. And this is one of the findings from that meeting, what, 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 what people were concerned about. And you see speeding vehicles was the largest concern, failure of driver's yield to pedestrians. So they're trying to cross the street and associated those wide pedestrian crossings, bikeway facilities. Yeah, those were the most prominent concerns we, we got. So delve in a little more into the crash data. You know, there's quite a lot of crashes on the corridor, so about, you know, about, this is over five a year. So this is about 10 a year. But most of those are minor injury or no injury crashes. And it's, you know, the more serious ones that we're most concerned about. So there were five serious injury crashes and one fatality. You know, you see pedestrians, even though, you know, on the, on the total crash level, they're not so heavily represented, but the only fatality was a pedestrian and two of those severe injury crashes, well, so pedestrians. And here's some mapping of the, of the crash injury data. So some of a, highlights some of the locations where the fatality was Makaiiva Street, Killaway and Makaiiva. And highlight some of the other locations where there were serious injuries. And you can see they're kind of clustered into corridors around the mall area. And then the section on closer, closer to Kamaki Middle School. Start going, going from Onakai further, a little towards town. Common crash factors, you know, this is from our Oahu pedestrian plan. But you know, the street has a lot of the characteristics that we see on other streets that have problems or where we see a high rate of crashes, speed limits 30 miles an hour, four lanes. You have some areas where there's a long section between pedestrian crossings. Speed data, we did a lot of data collection as part of this effort, we always do when we do a project. So on the speeds, you know, so the speed limit is 30 on sections in 25. So there is, you know, even by, you know, you know, common, you know, even giving people a little wee way with the speeds, there still is a lot of speeding. And, you know, 39 is really, if you recall that graph about someone's chance of survival, at 39, you're getting way over, you know, much, much greater than 50% chance that someone would be killed at that, at that speed. So the current lane configuration, most of the corridor is as four lanes and has dedicated left turn lanes. And then as you approach kind of the Kamaki Middle School area, it goes down to two lanes in the town direction, and one way in the other direction. So important to think about what we're working with. And as I noted, traffic counts, they really vary quite dramatically across the corridor. And this is something we really integrated into the design. The area that we see experiencing some congestion currently is, you know, the area kind of fronting the mall. And our, our count showed a little over 20,000 vehicles a day. And then just extending south, we're going, going towards Diamond Head from Pahoa Avenue, the volumes drop really dramatically. And then they're kind of stable in that a little less than 10,000 range. So this is a something, something that we integrated into the design. So proposed design that we're looking at, so I mentioned in that the section running the mall, where we have the heaviest tracking traffic volumes, we're maintaining the current configuration exactly as it is. So two lanes in each direction with the dedicated left turn lanes. And then it's, as you go south from Pahoa Avenue, that we would be removing a through lane in each direction. So go down to one through lane in each direction and dedicated left turn lanes. And then that variation would continue all the way to 22nd Avenue. And then we would have select left turn pockets, 19th and 18th to accommodate the school and heavier left turn volumes at 18th. So, you know, that, that kind of idea is what's called a three, four to three lane configuration or a road diet, sometimes called. And you see where, where we're making that modification is, you know, at the highest in the 12,000 vehicles per day range. And that's what, you know, at a, at a high level is considered a very good candidate. Where you're actually, you know, you have more capacity than needing that capacity is actually doing negative things, like leading to people being able to drive whatever speed they want on the street. You're not getting any, any benefit from those extra lanes, they're actually causing, causing harm. So here's a different, kind of a, a couple different ways to look at the proposed configuration, the existing, and then the proposed. And I will note that I think we brought about four different options to the community. When we went to, to out, and this is the one that through our consultation with the community seen the, the most supported. So buffered bike lanes, so I'll have another image. But as you see in this area, which is actually the section between 22nd and Onakai, where there's no median, but you see, go down to have a dedicated left turn lane that currently is, is none in this area. And then it would be one lane in each direction, parking will be maintained. And you'll have a bike way that has a buffer, provides a little additional separation. Here's another image of that, this is fronting Kahala Elementary. And you see it's, you know, that's where the median is obviously, but it's a rendering, high level. Not going to lose exactly this high level to give you a sense of it. And here's the section, sorry, fronting the mall, where as I mentioned, we're going to basically maintain the lane configuration as it is. The, what, what, what gives in this section to accommodate the bike way is the parking. The parking, we did a study along the entire corridor. And there is some parking utilization in this area, but we will be preserving all the parking as you go further south from Pahoa. And the utilization rate is, is quite low on the whole. So if, if folks that were dependent on this parking, have parking available, it'll just be one or two blocks away from them. And a little more on the traffic studies we conducted. So we did a lot of traffic counts. We also did queue analysis, where we looked at what the existing queues are and then with the, under the proposed condition, what they would be. So this is northbound, mark abound, Pahoa, and you see the queues are relatively small. If you travel this corridor, it's probably makes, makes sense to you. And this is in the southbound direction, similarly, we, we found pretty small queues in the peaks. Missing one slide, there was another slide that showed the queues at Waila Avenue on northbound and Makaiiva. And there's where we saw, you know, more significant queues during the peak hours and where we're, as a result of that, the traffic volumes were retaining the current lane configuration. So there'll be no, no change to traffic in those areas. And it's just slide, just, you know, you know, the, kind of the most visible benefit in this project is that we're putting in a bike way, but really, that's not the whole story. The lane reduction is going to do a lot to, one, reduce speeds because the, the lanes out there are just enabling the speed. Essentially, it's people go at the speed they want because there's no one in front of them. And when you reduce it to one lane, you have a situation where someone that's going slower ends up setting the speed and that person's more likely to be going in the speed limit. So that the fast motorist ends up going the speed of the slower motorist, not through congestion, but just because they're, they're going closer to the speed limit. And another big aspect is shortening the pedestrian crossing distances. So the street is very wide and breaking up the pedestrian crossing distance is going to really, really help start crossing Killaway Avenue. And it also provides the opportunity to do stuff like some curb extensions further improve that crossing distance for pedestrians and minimize their exposure. Just, you know, this is just a overview of the public outreach we conducted. As you mentioned, we've been kind of working on this in earnest for a while now. And we've met with a lot of the stakeholders in the area. And when they, you know, I kind of highlighted just the extent to which the schools are important. It's a very school heavy corridor, and we've definitely made a point to work with it. And so here's my last slide, just to give you an idea of next slide. So I'll drop, I'll drop. So for the first part of it, the project design is ongoing. So, you know, we're, we're still, we're still working on it. And I think in anticipation that we go out to bed approximately the end of, end of this calendar year. And we're continuing to engage with stakeholders and get stuff like this tonight, engaging neighborhood boards. We do have a complete streets mailing list, email list. And would encourage you all to get on that, you find out about the latest that's happening in this project and others. And then it's just to know, it's not related to this, this third bullet is not related to Killaway Avenue. It's related to the sidewalk projects that I mentioned on Harding and Kamaki Avenue, where we do a very specific outreach with the adjacent property owners. Because sidewalks are going to do things like, you know, modify their Kamaki Avenue where we do a very specific outreach with the adjacent property owners, because sidewalks are gonna do things like, you know, modify their driveways and whatnot. And I, I will end by noting that we also have. A website that's covers this project and it has a copy of the much longer presentation. It was shown to the community, presented in September, has a recording of that meeting. Has a summary of the input we received. And I certainly do welcome comments, but I understand you have time limitations, so. Folks that are interested in learning more, I'd encourage you to watch that video or, or view the extended presentation. And I do welcome comments this time and. I will also drop my email in the chat, so if you don't get to me right now, you can, you can certainly reach out and have me to discuss with you. So I'll end there, Chair. I'm sorry, Chair, I'm not able to hear anything at this time, so hopefully you've been hearing me. I'm still not hearing anything at this time, I'm not sure if you're asking questions or. Thanks for the notes in the chat, Steve. Regarding the Kahala Neighborhood Board, I don't know the exact date, I don't remember it offhand, but. I know on our website, we do actually have list out all the outreach, which, you know, included. The Kamaki Neighborhood Board as well. The, I think the project is primarily within those two neighborhood boards. So I mentioned it's part of an expanded project and that also extends into the Kapahulu. San Luis, it's neighborhood board as well, in the background. I'm sorry, I, I see someone on the video is speaking, but unfortunately I can't hear anything.